Kerry Parker for the sixth this evening. Craig's here.
Here.
Eleanor.
Here.
Renee.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Charlie.
Here.
Michael, here. Glenn, here. Elizabeth.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
A Jean.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda, the only adjustment that I have to the agenda is after item E public comments, we will be having board member comments. Item one. Yes, go ahead.
For adjustments to the agenda, I do want to make note that the B communications meeting is not tomorrow, listed at the bottom of it, but it's November 18th, considered November 11th, so for board members, that's important to correct that and invite the public. And Glenn, we also elected a delegate to the MSDA assembly in our August meeting, and so the assembly was last month. Do you want to report out on that?
Are you the reporter?
Yes.
That is wrong.
Glenn, do you want that down?
We could do that at the same time we do committee reports.
Okay, well, add it to the agenda.
Yeah, just to add it to those. Anything else? Item one, what action will school board take when you enter into executive session to consult with legal counsel according to law and MRSA subject four five? So any motion to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor of that motion? It's unanimous, the board will go into the conference room. We should be about an hour. We will try to keep it to an hour and then we will be back. Thank you, boys. Going to declare us out of public, out of executive session, seven twenty-four. We'll move on to item E, public comment via John Eastham from Brooks.
I would note that if you're not, if you're not speaking into microphone, you're trying to listen to YouTube video, it's very difficult to hear anything. So unfortunately, too, you're sharing live, so anything you say, Glenn, is going to be very difficult for anybody trying to watch the video to get the minutes. When we begin the meeting, right, just the last two times I've been here, I know we're in a hurry to get things moving along, but if you could just make an announcement, if you're going to start the pledge, wait for like three seconds so everybody has an opportunity to show the same respect, that would be wonderful, we'd appreciate it, because I feel disrespectful when all of a sudden it's like say the pledge, bounce up and you guys are starving, and then I'm trying to follow along with everybody else in the audience. So that would be amazing. Two other things, I noted that a lot of the, or the current policies that are being amended or thrown back are as stated in the previous meeting due to the current administration's views or little opinions. So I was just curious, on Title IX, I haven't seen anything in regards to men in the sports or bathrooms or locker rooms. I was wondering if that was something that was going to be addressed as well, because that has also been changed federally, and so I was hoping that you guys would take a look at that. I know that came up with the meeting, it was out prior to this one. Secondly, the last is, in the meeting minutes for the September third communications meeting, it was stated clearly that the meeting minutes, or the website needed to be cleaned up and the meeting minutes should be gotten rid of. I would like to find out that the meeting minutes are part of the permanent record and cannot be deleted. Video can be deleted after five years, but only if there is actual meeting minutes for the record. So for example, the last meeting that was done, was done by video, so if there are actual written minutes for that, you could delete the video after five years, but without the permanent record or written, the video would have to remain. So I would hope that you would find a way to communicate with your lawyers, to find out what you can actually legally get rid of before you start deleting any minutes off of the website. Again, meeting minutes are considered part of the permanent record. I have concerns, again, I expressed them last time, that people don't understand the law on school board, and I don't know if you've taken that time, since the last time I was here, to read the law as much as I have, but I hope you will. There are processes in which we, the public, have, and which to help hold you accountable, one of which is to, if you are not willing to cease a practice that is illegal, is to file a complaint with the legislature. If the legislature deems it necessary and you still continue to not comply, they can cease funding for the school. So I just want to make sure you guys understand that being on the school board is, I appreciate you being here, but there's laws that govern what you do, and we'd appreciate it if you know and understand the laws and abide by them. Thank you.
We have Blaine Pattersons.
Probably like it's four.
Are both of you speaking together?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my name's Melissa.
Could you please use the mic?
My name's Melissa, and we're here on behalf of our son. He is five years old, and he's in kindergarten in the Mountview district. I wanted to come here to see if I could get some guidance on what to do. We've had quite a few issues in the school district, and we are trying to get some answers and resolve them. So our son is five, he's been diagnosed with ADHD, and he has some behavior issues. He is in the life skills class in Mountview Elementary, not for educational purposes, he actually is very intelligent in his first grade level and everything, but unfortunately, the Mountview does not have a behavioral program here, so they stick our behavioral children into the life skills department. My son has been picked up four times since school has started, four behavior issues that have been on his infamous campus. He's actually been picked up three times extra, besides that four, between 250 and 255 for unsafe behavior, and they couldn't get him on the van, he rides the van because the bus would be over an hour ride where we live in Newt. He was just recently suspended for three days, out of school suspension, because he hit another little child, and he was then suspended for unsafe behavior. On 11-6, I had a, my child does have an IUP set forth for behaviors. On 11-6, we had a team Zoom meeting with the principal, the special ed director, my husband and I, his life skills teacher, his general education teacher, and in that meeting, it was two hours. The only thing that was accomplished in that meeting was that we had requested that he have a behavioral functional assessment done. They, in that meeting, want to do an out of district transfer to our, for our child. They want to either have him go to Brewer or to Belgrade, which would be an hour ride for my child to be in a van both ways. And my child does not ride well, and that's why he's on a van to begin with, so it would be 20-minute ride from our home to Mountview, and the reasoning for that is because they said that they could not accommodate him. Back in May of this year, we had a kindergarten transition meeting, IUP meeting, and in that meeting, there was about 20 of us. There was his pre-K teachers, his specialist that he had, there was also principals from the Troy School, from the Mountview School, the special ed director, and we had all explained exactly what Jackson's behaviors are. He likes to kick, pit, bite, and Mountview had assured us that they could accommodate my child's needs that he needed. Now I'm being told that they can no longer accommodate him, we're having to pick him up nonstop for his behaviors. On 11-8, 10-8, I went into the superintendent's office and spoke with the special ed director, and he had informed me that he had some exciting news, a really nice proposition that they had actually contracted on with a company out of Skopjean that has EHPs that were going to be joining Jackson's classroom. And we were excited for that. He said Jackson was one of the children that was chosen to be able to have assigned EHP to him. He actually has two EHPs and a behavioral health specialist that has been trying to collect data to perform, to form a behavior plan. I was told it was contracted on. A week later, I had to walk and pick Jackson up for behavior, and the BH data analysis actually explained to me Jackson's insurance, that his main care, because we actually adopted Jackson when he was eight months old. Jackson's main care is actually being charged for this EHP service. As a parent, I'm okay that his insurance is being charged, because anything to help my child, I'm for, but don't lie to me and say that you're contracted on and then you're charging my child's insurance. And then on 10-24, the EHP team, the data analysis, had brought to our attention and said that in order for Jackson to be successful in school, she needed a safe room, also known as a seclusion room, and it's an eight-by-eight room that would be built and have pads in it, so then Jackson, but not only just Jackson or son, but
Anybody else?
Other children with behavior issues could use this room and utilize this room to de-escalate themselves, and so they could go back into their general education and be successful. And so I went in and had advocated to the special ed director in Unity that I wanted this room built so that my child could become successful in school. He had said that they were going to have a meeting, and that they would talk about it with the superintendent and himself, and make a decision. When Jackson got off from his, his suspension on 11-3, the decision that had been made for that seclusion room was they switched the classrooms around. So instead of Jackson being in a big life skills classroom, they moved him across the hall to a smaller classroom with just two other children, so there's three children total in this classroom, with the EHP team. My EHP specialist has informed us that that still is not helpful, because they still have to dump the other two kids out of the classroom if a child is having an episode or a behavior issue. And so if a child is having an episode or behavior issue for more than an hour, parents are called to come pick up their children, because those other children that are then taken out of classroom cannot be out of that classroom for more than an hour with their academics. And so we, as parents, are trying to get this seclusion room put into this classroom, because when I asked, how much is it going to cost for my child to be transferred out of district? I was told $50,000 a year for one child, or $1,000 for an isolation room that multiple kids could use and be successful in a general school.
I offered to pay for it.
I'm not going to allow my child to be transferred out of district. It's unfortunate that our school does not have a behavior program, and so we're advocating and asking, how do we get this seclusion room put into this classroom? Because these EHP specialists my son has have found amazing. There are only hope for my child to succeed, and right now, my child is not getting any academics, because he is stuck in this room with behavior specialist, and he is labeled as a bad child. Another thing that's bothered me is on our Zoom meeting, we're told that people are scared of my 42-half-year-old, five-year-old child, and we just want him to be corrected when he's doing bad behavior. We've gone in and picked him up, and there's seven teachers standing around my child, watching him destroy a classroom, and nothing is being said to him by just standing there and watching. And they're saying, well, if he's not harming himself or others, we have to allow him to do what he's doing. And so for us as parents, we don't leave that classroom until he's picked up his mess. And the teachers have said to us, there's no need for him to pick up that mess, that they'll pick it up, and we don't allow that, because he has consequences for his actions.
One thing, I went in to get him one day, and they had given him kinetic sand when he was in the height of stage, and it looked like murder beach inside the classroom. I made him pick it up, hey, I put broom and dust in him, and the teacher told me that that was a weapon, that they could not give that to him. And I assured them that they could give you the broom and dust and Jackson picked it up, and we had no issues. We had him back in order in 15 minutes, and he walked out with it.
So on our Zoom meeting last week, we had also asked, because it seems like it's an hour rule, if our son is in a rage for an hour, parents get called, and they have to come pick up their child. But his EHP team has said, we don't want him to go home, because now it's a learned behavior. He's learned, if he does a certain amount of stuff, kicks, bites for over an hour, that his parents get called, and there's consequences at home as well for us getting calls. But he knows that he's getting sent home, and his EHP team is saying, no, we don't want him to go home, but it's an adamant decision on him going home. And so not only am I getting out of work early, my husband's getting out of work early, it's now been over 10 times that we've had to pick him up. We're in jeopardy of losing our jobs, because the school's hindering my child from staying there and, and being corrected with this bad behavior on, if you have this hour outburst, we're going to call your mom, and they're going to come get you, or your dad will come get you. And I did go to the Department of Education, and I sat there for two hours with a gentleman there, and talked to a gentleman who's very educational, gave me the information that I needed, so that I can make sure my child is successful. And in that two-hour meeting, I learned a lot about my rights, and a lot about what I can ask for going forward when I have these IUPs. So that's great for parents that don't really know how to navigate the IUP program. But my question is, how much of our taxpayer dollars is being spent to have children transferred out of district, because there's no behavior program in Mountview? My EHP team is willing to help guide my child through school and be successful, and they've actually said that they can have Jackson in the general education class within a year and a half, if they're giving the supplies that they need for him to be successful. And this isolation room is one of the things that can be successful. And I can tell you this much, they have a clinical person that's been coming in, and she has been evaluating my son to try and help him as well. We had three good days of full school, three good days that he's had for the first time in two weeks, where he's not had to go home. And I don't know what's changed, and I don't know if it's just the team has finally learned how to figure out Jackson, but this team is great for him, and I just want them to have the resources they need to make my son successful, but to make other kids successful We had, I guess I've already said that, but I just need guidance. I need to know where to go.
Could I mention a few things to you, please?
Sure.
Blaine and Melissa, thank you for advocating for your child. We have, if all parents were like you, our schools would be very different. So I've been in your shoes, so I know what this feels like. I did speak at length on Friday with Lisa about this, and we did talk about some different things. I had planned to communicate that with you this week. I will be speaking with her again directly tomorrow. We'll address this again, and we will get back in touch with you. But you've made some really good points, and some, brought up some really good things for us to consider, and you know, I just appreciate you.
One of our biggest things is, he doesn't like to ride more than 20 minutes in a bus. We're trying to get him, I think he's not for rides at night, trying to get him used to a weekly, we give him the auto-rele bus. However, you ship him to Brewer or Belgrade, something happens out there, and not to mention it's winter time, and he's stuck in Brewer or Belgrade, it's fucking interesting for these kids, not, not my kid, not any other kid. You know, it's, it gets smart.
I think you've, you've made your point well, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And we will be back in touch with you quickly.
You have my number.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item F, approval of meeting minutes. Yes.
I thought you were going to add board comments.
Yes, that's my guy. I put that in there, but you didn't say. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So yes, this is a time when we could have board member comments. So Mike, do you have some? You can sit down.
Surprisingly, I do have, I have a question, actually. I just wonder how the drop-off sites were going in terms of the buses, they're actually being utilized, and just a quick update, is a great idea.
Okay, I don't see Pete, so I will speak for him. Again, this is, I wouldn't say that we have newly formed specific drop-off sites anymore or less than we ever do, because our transportation does an amazing job of working with individual families. So we do have some designated spots, and then we have, very frequently, we have new designated spots, because a family will call and we say, this is working, or this is working, and we change course, and so to my knowledge, we don't have anything not working with that. I don't know if I'm answering your question very well, Mike, but...
You are, you are. I just, I know transportation was, was a big issue for, for people, for parents and community members, where the schools got closed.
Absolutely. I personally haven't heard a single complaint about transportation.
That's great.
But again, that, I just give credit to Pete and the Transportation Department, because they really do an amazing job of, of taking every phone call and working with every family, doing the best they can to accommodate every unique need, so.
Great, thank you. That's, that's music for my ears.
Yes, and along with that, Hallie brought this up at the previous meeting, about ridership time and some of those things, and we did have a chart that was presented to the transportation group, I happened to be at that meeting, and the percentage of students riding more than an hour on in our buses is like, something like 2%, is that correct? Does anyone else remember that number? Something like that, because, and some of that is actually because some of our buses are being used as a sort of daycare for parents that have to leave for work early, so they are dropping children off, or a few children anyway, to, so that they can get to work. So those are some of those that are riding for that amount of time.
Right. That's all, that's all the transportation.
Any more comments, Michael? No more. Anyone else for board member comments? Yes, Alan.
I'll do a shout-out for the gap program. We had 20 gap students this past month for a week and a half. The program was incredibly well arranged on the stage. We had a culture night of the 20 German students doing all kinds of activities, including dancing and a quiz show, and so I just want to do a shout-out to the, through the German teacher, Frau Misada, who, who organized the whole event. And heck, Freedom had 10 of 20 kids in the hometown, so Freedom wrote that board. Okay, just a shout-out for what is good on here in the district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Approval of minutes of October 14th. So move.
Second.
Discussion on those minutes. Yes, Alan.
Usually Maria has a checkoff on who's present, and there was no checkoff in the meetings, it was just all empty boxes, so I would say that that needs to be fixed, because I think we were all present. And then the adenum was cut off on page one for adenum number two, the board chair report, and so we didn't have the full report for the minutes.
Should have had that before sent in, so I don't know why that wasn't included.
Sometimes she, if it's two-sided things, sometimes she does...
We'll get it in, we'll get it in there if it isn't in there.
Right, but I'm not approving the minutes until it's noted.
Anything else with the minutes? Seeing not all those in favor.
With corrections.
With the corrections, yes. Opposed. It's unanimous, thank you. Superintendent's report.
I'll try to be a little bit brief tonight. So I don't know about anyone else, but I am having a hard time believing that it's already November. I think I missed October altogether, things are, what do you guys think, schools fly by come fast this year, isn't it? So, I know, right? So we did have, we've had amazing things happening, as Ellie mentioned one, and we've just, October was a blur, but we had some fun trunk-or-treats happening at different schools. We had a community food drive just last week, I believe that was, and that was an opportunity for anybody in the community to, it was like a drive-through thing, I believe, and so families could come up, community members could come up and drive through, and get boxes of fresh produce and vegetables. We do that every month, just in case you're not aware, we get a delivery from Good Shepherd Food Bank, and we get three boxes of produce and vegetables, and we, they divide it all up out here in the lobby. It's quite an operation to see, but they come down, they divide it all up, they bag it, they label it, and then typically, it's either me, or Joby, or a combination of the two. We come and pick up for all the outlined schools, and we go deliver those in one day, which is a great opportunity for me to get into the schools, and then the high school kids can just grab it as they want, go buy, we have something in the elementary over here, so just a great opportunity to get some fresh food. My car always smells really good for a few days, it smells like fresh fruits and vegetables, because there's stuff rolling around all over the car. In October, I had the opportunity to attend the MSMA annual superintendent's conference, which is a conference for superintendents and school board members. Ellie was able to attend as well. I believe Craig, you were there on the Wednesday, not, not the part that I was at, so I didn't get to see him. But just an amazing opportunity, this is the second year I have attended this, and it was actually three days long for me this time in Augusta, and just absolutely amazing superintendents from all over the state, lots of great keynote speakers, and then a variety of sessions that we can choose to attend, so I went to several that were just really interesting, so that was a great opportunity. Speaking of opportunities, I had two people take me up on my offer to take any of you that want to around to any of the schools that you want to visit. I had Kathy and Renee, who came and spent some time with me in Troy, I probably talked their ear off, but we had a lovely time, got to go into classrooms, got to talk to some teachers, to some students. got to talk to some teachers, to some students, just, just see the space. And I believe you'll go, "We're coming up here to Mount View this week." So we're gonna be on tour up here. Anybody else that's interested in that, just let me know. I'll work with you to find the time that works. But if you wanna just come and sort of see for yourself what's going on on a normal, typical day, no guarantees what you'll see, but we'll have some fun, and we'll walk around, and anything you want. So I hope others can pick me up on that. One other quick thing I wanted to mention, um, we have something called CSTAG training, which all the administrators got together in the conference room, and it was a full-day training. And that stands for Comprehensive Student Threat Assessment Guidance. So basically, we have kids who, um, may say some unsettling things from time to time. They, they may say, they may make threats. And so what this training does for all the admin is it teaches us how to investigate those threats and determine whether they are transient or substantiated. So basically, sometimes we have little ones who might be frustrated, they don't know how to do their math, and they may something, say something kind of scary, like, "I want, I want to hurt myself because I can't understand my math." Things like that, ranging all the way up to more serious honest threats. So this training is really valuable. Um, it is a full-day training, but it went really well, and it just gives admin tools to sort of help sort some of these things out, so we know how best to support students who may be making these comments. So, um, so that was really great training. And then, coming up, just wanna put this out here, especially for those who might watch the video and see, we have parent-teacher conferences that are just around the corner. I always stress the importance of these for parents, for teachers. Just an amazing opportunity to come and have conversation, dialogue about how a kid is doing, where their strengths are, what their challenges might be, what they might need for support, what they like about school, what they don't like about school, all the things that we need to know. This is a really great opportunity. So those are coming up later in November. All schools should be sending out information. Probably secretaries will start calling and setting up, trying to schedule these appointments. But I really encourage everyone to really push this and see if we can't get a huge turnout for conferences this year. And this is the first year that we are, we're doing a little, something different with our schedules. So kids don't have any school the entire week of Thanksgiving, which is different. You're welcome. But staff have PD Day, which is another great opportunity for us to continue with our Restoring Practices Initiative, and some de-escalation training. So de-escalation training is another tool that we're gonna try to put in teachers' toolboxes, which kind of goes along with, with all our safety things. It's just a, um, little tips and tricks to help a situation that seems like it could maybe get a little out of control, maybe de-escalate that before it does. So really excited to be able to offer that training to teachers. And that'll be happening, and then those conferences happen that same week. So while the kids get a little extra, staff will be here doing these important things. And I think that was all I was gonna share.
Sorry, Lisa, I, one thing that I was gonna ask you was about, as SNAP benefits have been interrupted, what are we doing for students? And so thank you for letting me know. And is that something that just happens? Is it weekly, is it monthly? And is this something that happens regularly at the school?
So, monthly, we do the bags of, um, vegetables and produce, and we make sure to get those to all the kids who sign up. So there's always in the, in the newsletter, there's always a link where families can go and sign up. High school, like I said, they're always just there, anybody can grab them, um, on their way out. But the elementary, middle school, we have to sign up for, so we can get them to the right people. That happens the first Thursday? First Thursday of every month, we do that. Um, this, this extra thing, this last week, this community sort of drive-through, that was a one-time thing, as far as I know. I'm not sure if that's happening. I'm not sure if that's happening yet.
Yeah, it's a sudden conversation, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I, you know, that was obviously in response to understanding that some uncertainty right now, obviously, the SNAP benefits and such. So I will find out if that's gonna be in the...
That's so great.
Yeah, here it was, it was well received. Um, I do have one question. I don't know if this is the time to ask it or not, but we had talked about having our, um, December meeting possibly in Monroe. I do wanna just mention, we're also supposed to have the auditor come to that finance committee meeting, so I don't know if that's the best timing to...
I, I think we've gotta go with it because we've got too many places to be. So I think, you know, we, we've already kind of put the word out that we're gonna do that. I think, I think we need to do that.
So stick with having it in Monroe? Okay, well, we'll, we'll figure out the auditor.
I mean, unless everyone else thinks we should not, but I, I feel we need to move on because we've got other places to meet also. We're gonna run out of time, we're gonna be back here for a budget.
Okay, we got it.
You have your items, one through four.
Oh, yeah. So we have one appointment. We are very excited to be bringing Jeff Traptan on as our Transportation Supervisor. Um, Jeff Traptan is a community member. He worked in the police force for many years, and all those other things, and retired. And I'd like to find him to come back and try to drive the bus. She goes, "We were very thankful." He got his bus driver's license, has been doing that for us, and now he is moving into the Transportation Supervisor role. So he is very excited. This is one of the positions that someone resigned from last year, and Pete just hasn't become the right person yet. So this is someone that's going to take a little bit off of Pete's plate, and I'm very, very thankful for that opportunity. And then we have two retirements. Um, we have one that's coming right up in December. Sherri Cohen is a speech-language pathologist, and she will be getting done in December. And then Joe Barnes, longtime special education teacher in the district. She is putting her retirement, but she will finish out the school year, which is retire as of, as of June. And that's it, they don't have any transportation investigations.
Move on to our committee reports. We'll start with policy.
As you saw on the agenda, there are 10 policies up for the second reading. And, uh, there are two new policies that were sent up to the Policy Committee. One with updates that just need a second read, that will need a second reading next month. And the other is to be, be reviewed because it's, um, no significant updates on it. But we want an update from the last time it was reviewed.
I'll side with that. Curriculum.
The Curriculum Committee did not meet this month, we're planning for a December meeting.
Thank you, Michael. Operations, Finance. Craig?
Thank you. As typical, there was a great presentation put together by Pete, from Pete. And, um, he has a lot on his plate, and he's handling it very well. He obviously goes on a multitask. And some of the highlights is that he has, uh, with the new van, the wheelchair lift, they have already made two trips transporting students with that, and it has gone well. And he expects to be doing more beginning in January. And, um, year-to-date, he has made 100 additional trips with, uh, special activities, athletics, and some curriculum, uh, purposes as well. And so currently, he is, uh, working on lighting that needs to be updated, and also, um, working on finding subs for bus drivers. That is an ongoing need, constantly. So if any of you knows anyone that would like to help out in that regard, that would be appreciated. And then Barb did a fabulous job of, as well presenting with the revenue and expense report, according to the articles. And we are, uh, looking at preparing for the upcoming budget. There is an interest to communicate more easily somehow, or more concisely, with our respective towns, so that when we start the budget workshops, they will already be somewhat up to speed, so that they will be more knowledgeable in knowing which way, uh, the money flows, if you would. And there still is an outside chance, I think, and talking with Barb last month or the month before, about having some workshops for us board members to know a little bit more about how the numbers work, and how she can get us up to speed more quickly. And other than that, um, she let us know there's some grant funding that has been received and, um, already distributed, and that's a huge help. We don't know a lot of times about the funding, especially when it comes to grants. And, um, so we learned a little bit about that tonight, and so that was appreciated.
Thank you, Craig. Communications, Renee.
Are you doing finance?
Yes, we would do, yes.
You just got contact. Since Candy has updated our town office list, we discussed contacting the town offices and sending information to put them, put on their webpages, information about Thrill Share, the fact that the school board videos are, are now online, and possibly to, um, talk about the school board meeting dates, if they're not beyond their webpages. We also discussed contacting the, um, the selectmen's boards and letting them know that December's meeting is going to be in Monroe, and, you know, asking to invite them to the, uh, the selectmen, to invite them to the meeting. We're also discussing an initiative to present, uh, at the next school board meeting, um, something that we have been developing on the communications.
Renee, can you pull that mic a little closer?
Oh, yeah. That we have been discussing at the communications to showcase our schools. And I actually have a handout that I can give you, and hopefully, we can put this on the agenda for next, for the next school board meeting, to see if the proposal would be accepted. And that's what we discussed at the meeting today.
Thank you for printing those all up. I didn't expect you to print all of those up. School Closure Committee, uh, we have not, uh, had any, uh, ads to attend, although have had a little bit of communication from the Town of Liberty about possible upcoming meeting times. I have been in contact with, uh, Select Board from Waldo and from Liberty that we are willing to attend any meetings that we would, if they would request, if they would like to have us there, and just have not heard anything back from that. So pretty much as far as the School Closure Committee, that's, uh, that's pretty much all that's going on at this time. I did receive from the Town of Brooks, uh, the architect's report that they received from the grand, um, some issues, conditions, thoughts about the Morse Building. Uh, I believe the reports are similar, uh, from Walker, according to what they said. I have not seen the actual architect's report from Walker. And I have my own thoughts about that, but at this, this time, I don't think that's any of our concern. This is the concern of those towns and how they wish to proceed with, with, uh, with what they have for information to date. So, uh, if we can be of any assistance with our committee with that, we would certainly do that. But that's all I have for, for that. Item six, W, the Technical Board.
So Najin and I were gonna do a thing today, giving you more information about the WCTC, because we had an hour-long session before this. We're punting that, we're gonna do that a little bit later. But, so, as you all know, last month, we got together at the Waldo County Technical Center, took a little tour, ate some food, and then saw in excruciating detail the architectural plans that the architects had, um, had come up with, looking at what our needs, what they feel our needs are versus what we have. Now what happens is we start pushing back on the architects. So that is gonna be a very long process. What you guys saw, what you looked at, that's not gonna be what, what happens. Um, so, so that's the part of the process that we're in now, is pushing back on that to figure out exactly what we do need. So, um, Najin and I will be at the next meeting to hear, like, what that, what the continuing process is, like, what their plan is for those architects, or with the firm, um, that we're working with. Uh, and we'll bring you more information when we have it.
Libby, Libby, oh, oh, sorry. Has it been determined whether they're really thinking of an entirely new building, or just...
That's still the part of the process that we're in. Um, so there are definite issues with the building that they're in. Um, and the fact that the student population at the WCTC keeps growing, they're starting to run out of space, and so starting to move into, they have their first classroom that's in a shipping container, basically. Um, and once you start getting to the shipping container stage, you do have to either expand on site or look for a new set. And so that's still part of this whole conversation, is financially, what is the best choice for the community?
Thank you.
Along with that reward question that comes up is the, I don't know if this has been spoken about at the center, but the condition of the roof. Is anything being done to address that roof situation?
So I think the, what we're deciding to do is do piecework at this point, so you don't wanna redo the whole roof if we're gonna move in five years. Uh, but there are definitely places on the roof that need to be fixed. So, they do, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
The process of getting the estimate, they're in the process of getting that, regardless, it has to be done.
Yeah, and there's, I don't know the term that you do, like a pole test? Or something like that, where they'll actually, like, hang weight on the roof and assess if the roof is, like, gonna be able to be snow-bearing or all of that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Personnel negotiations, anything going on there?
Uh, yes, actually, quite a bit is going on. We begin negotiation, collective bargaining, that you heard about in, in our, never mind. And that begins this Thursday. So we'll be meeting to work out the guidelines within the negotiation, as well as setting up some dates for a meeting. And those meetings are, except the session meetings. Craig and I have asked Lisa, and she has agreed, to give the board an update on her goals. She presented her goals to us in August, and we're looking for some feedback for that. She preciously agreed to do that. This is part of our, our evaluation of the superintendent, which is a rather cumbersome sort of activity. Uh, we're hoping to streamline that. So, um, this will be an informal part of it. And we'll send you all this week, uh, the information of how the public, the policy is. You can take a look at that. At some point, we're gonna be asking you to make some evaluations, so I'm really encouraging you to look at what sort of things are, are on that about, so that you can start to hone in on them. As I said, it's pretty cumbersome at this point, so hopefully Craig and I will get together and say, kind of think about ways that might streamline, about making it a little bit more effective, more efficient, um, and then pass that over to the policy, because, um, the way it's worded now and the timing just really doesn't work very well for, for us. Any questions?
I would be willing to step in on, on the negotiations if you want me. If you don't want me, I won't do it, but I'm just saying I'm willing if you, if you want me here in town.
Thanks very much for that offer. Um, at this point, maybe we'll, we'll start without you, and then it, um, it seems like we could, we could use another person for Henry, I think, or Cole, or whoever.
That usually happens to me, they maybe brought me.
Thank you very much for that offer. Craig, I, I don't, Craig and I are, we don't approach this, you're good.
Okay, thanks. You guys are a team.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, yes, sure.
As many of you know, Gary Heser from Lord Lake. And the question I have is about the superintendent's goal. So, um, a couple of weeks ago, I made some comments about the academic performance of this school versus, uh, that of schools in the nation. versus that of schools in the nation. And it seems to me, so many people after that meeting congratulated me or expressed affirmation of my observations from three, I think, objective sources on academic performance of the school versus those 17,000 other high schools in the U.S. So great, everybody affirms that. We know excellent academic performance. We know that Maine used to perform better than the national average about a decade ago. Maine on average now performs less than the national average today. And so the fact that we compete, we're comparable to the performance of Maine isn't for me satisfactory. I think we're underserving our schools and I'm seeking to improve that. So where the rubber hits the road, it seems to me would be part of the superintendent's objectives or goals. And so I haven't been privy to that, I don't really need to be, but as I bring forward this issue of academic performance, my question is, do the superintendent's goals reflect an escalation, an increase, an improvement in academic performance of RS3U for the benefit of the students that attend school here?
Thank you Gary. Yes.
Gary, just mentioning so everybody else knows, if, if you look at the newsletters, I think it was just, not, not the one that just went out about last month, my goals were in there. I put them right in there so that the public was aware of what my specific target goals were.
Move to our student rep reports, Abel and Carly. And before you say anything, Abel, you go first or?
Yes.
Well, big shout out to, you know, I was speaking about this to the Mountview girls' soccer and I'll, I'll leave it at just saying that's probably one of the most exciting soccer games the schools ever seen.
I was there. It was most exciting.
Okay.
I didn't tell them how it turned out.
I can, I can do that.
Okay, I thought you might.
Yep. So as, as Glenn was talking about, soccer, soccer just ended last week. Boy soccer, we unfortunately lost in penalty kick shootout in the early main finals, but it was a, a really good season and lots of fans showed up to support us, so. And all I've heard, all I've heard around the school is just positive, so.
That was a double overtime game.
Yes, yes.
How many sets of penalty kicks?
Two, well, 10 penalty kicks.
Yeah, 10 penalty kicks.
Yeah. But we're moving on. The, the fall banquet for fall sports is this Wednesday, so yeah, just awards, season awards. A few shout outs across the fall sports. We had three first team KVAC players on the boy soccer team, Stuart Milton, Victor Alpheld and Tanner O'How. Tanner also got KVAC Player of the Year for the second straight year, so that was a big deal. Emily Richards got KVAC First Team for the girl soccer team. Cole Garrish got KVAC First Team for golf and Eric Harley got Second Team for football. We also had 18 seniors get all academic KVAC awards across fall sports, so that's, that's good. Yep, basketball starts next Monday, so that's, that's exciting. Yeah. I guess my last thing is today, there was a new bell schedule in school, so that was a, that was a new thing. I think, I'm not quite sure the details of it, but classroom made a little bit shorter every period to then accommodate for a 10-minute like snack slash break period between sixth and seventh periods for our students who are allowed to go to counseling, get a snack or go down to cafeteria and get a snack and just decompress, which I think is really good because lunch at 10:45 can, can feel early and the last five periods can feel long. So I think that was a really good addition. I'll definitely be talking to a lot of students, kind of seeing what they think and we kind of, so. Yep, that's it. Any questions?
All right. The quarter just ended for Mountview High School, which is really exciting. We had a lot of people make honor roll across all grades, which is awesome in high school. And we'll be having like a quarter assembly where we like recognize students for honors, high honors, and teachers get to recognize their favorite students and like what they're doing in classes. Another thing I want to mention is Mountview High School just started a civil rights team just this October. Our first meeting, we had nine students, which is awesome for a club. We meet on Mondays at lunch. The thing that we're recognizing this month is Native American Heritage Month. So that includes, we had a little meeting about that. We have a board in the hall, in the hallway. We sent out a survey to students and staff in the high school if they were, if they identify as Native American or if they had a family member or someone close to them that identified as Native American. And we had a couple of staff members, including David Eskies, say that he is, he does identify as Native American. This block knows somebody. So we're going and interviewing these teachers and talk about like their family, their connection, discrimination that they face, which is really awesome. And we're taking this data that we've, we're going to put it on this board so students can see kind of just a visual representation of the Native American, like stuff like that. So we're really excited and as of today, actually, we had 13 students join civil rights. So I think making a little change at a time is better than no change at all. Any questions?
Thanks very much. Welcome you. Move on to our board chair report. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. Also a shout out to Mountview Middle School girls soccer undefeated for the season. So they did very well also. Few things. When I am out about the community, most of the conversation that's put my way concerns the closing of two of our elementary schools and the effect that it's had on these local towns and the families that are involved in these closings. I, like each of you, I certainly have my own opinions about these closures, but right now, we have two schools that have closed and the only viable option we have as a board directors is to move forward from here. My response to any of these conversations has been exactly the same. My job and the job of the rest of the board here is to support all the students and families in our 11 towns and make this the very best situation we can as we move forward. Our school closure committee is willing to meet with any town or closure committee that asks us, we're certainly willing to do that and we've tried to make that known. At our December 8th meeting, we will, as we said, we will be meeting at Monroe School for our regular monthly, monthly meeting. We will be inviting all residents of Jackson, Brooks, Waldo and Monroe to attend this meeting and allow folks to voice their concerns or suggestions regarding this new group of students. The hope is to hear folks out and see if there are any ways we might consider improvements to this new structure of our schools. Our communications committee along with Lisa and staff will do their best between now and that December 8th meeting to get the word out to all residents in the previously mentioned towns. On another topic, adult ed. We will be having the lady in the back, Sue Brennan, our adult ed director presenting at our, I believe, our January meeting, is that correct? To explain to all of us what we actually do here with adult ed. Also, for the technical center folks, regarding adult ed and the current usage of our technical center, this is just my opinion. We used to hold evening classes for tradespeople, computer classes and others that could attend those sessions in the evening. This was, I don't know how long this program has not been going, but it's been a while, I understand. Those sessions used to be very well attended. At least some of us here in this room attended, took advantage of those evening sessions. And they made a real difference in different skillsets that we were seeking to either improve our current jobs or to just educate ourselves in something we didn't know anything about. My take from our combined meeting that we had a text on the last month is that we no longer have these classes and the main reason, according to the director, that we don't, that we just can't find the instructors to, to run these classes. I honestly find this somewhat unacceptable, but I also know the difficulty in finding skilled workers for any job set. But without these classes being available to our general population, we leave behind a significant portion of our workforce that would likely attend these classes and gain beneficial employment from businesses in our communities that could and would employ them. We have a huge resource that is sitting idle during evening hours when it could be made available to our working class adult population. A possible solution, and I'm saying a possible solution to this lack of instructors for these programs could be to require our current technical staff to teach one evening course every other week as part of their upcoming job description. We could pay them well for their time and possibly offer them some other perks. But I think we really need to wait, we need to look and try to find a way to, to see if something like this could be possible. We desperately need to make use of this facility at a time that it could be productive and provide necessary education to a population that I feel is needing. And I would just request our reps, if, I don't know if you've heard anything about this or if you've talked about it down there or if it's come up, but I think it's a topic at least worthy of discussion to find out, you know, is this something that we could do to try to, how do we solve this problem? You know, what could we do with this? That's all I'll say for that. On another topic, Lisa and I have had discussions about this position, this community coordinator outreach position. We've been speaking about this for the last several months. Lisa has been working on the job description for this position and also developing a brochure that outlines much needed information about RSU3 schools that an individual who might be employed in this work would need to familiarize themselves with, about our schools and have the skillset that would be available to do this particular type of work. We will keep you posted about this. But I am pleased with the progress to date thus far. This would mostly, most likely start off as a practice position that it might also just define itself somewhat as it proceeds. So this is just a work in progress. We're just studying this. Lisa's working on this and I feel that this is a very necessary part of what we as a board need to, to have to, to, for one thing, it would be a big help to Lisa just in different family situations, not necessarily what we saw here this evening, but maybe in different situations where families that are having problems with this, whatever it might be in the schools, this person might be able to meet with those families, talk about a possible solution. And as I said, this position could possibly define itself as, as it goes forward. That's all I have.
Glenn, are you thinking this would be a position that you would bring up during the financial process that we're just starting into to see if it could be budgeted? Because we don't have a budget for this position this year.
That may not be true.
I think the community voted that they didn't want that in the budget.
I know what you're saying and that's why I said, let's, let's keep you posted on this. But yes, it would be something in the budget section. Old business, I don't think we have any. Okay? Yes, the old business is policies. Could we do these policies in one lump group? I know it is, but is there a reason we can't do it as a group like that?
Only when the motion is made and somebody?
If somebody has a problem with it. So we need a motion for these policies.
Motion, prove the second reading is probably a policy.
Yes. Well, we gotta do this the other way around. We need someone to move it to that someone second, but.
So moved.
Thank you, Michael.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on these policies?
I have, I have a couple. I just wanted to make sure if we changed the wording on policy AC and policy ACA. I believe we all agree and use the terms such as rather than including. Have those changes that we?
Yeah, I sent this to Maria, asking her to put it in her folders, but it didn't happen. Although I told her she didn't need to print it out. So AC, so in the fourth paragraph of AC, race and influence associated with race such as hair texture, Afro hair style, et cetera. The including is changed to such as. Yeah, I'm really sorry it, it didn't get sent to you so you could see it.
I think they, I think they didn't want to print that much paper is the reason.
No, no, no. I asked for it not to be printed out, but I asked for the folks to be able to see it in a, in an attachment and they could read through it. So it's also true for policy ACAB, ACAB. They were including such as. It also happened on policy ACA, where including was changed to such as. So that's the only policies that I, I came across that we had to do that too. I guess she was out today because I did follow up with her today and it didn't happen. Yeah.
So I'm hoping you could make some, I was suggesting minor changes, that probably we could re, still vote on these policies as a second reason, if that's okay. So I'm looking at policy ACA-A-R and ACAB-R, so those are the procedures for student discrimination and gender discrimination. And if you, when you read through this, of course, the, the title line, the title line coordinator, the AAAO title line coordinator is a very, very important role. If you look on the first page on both of those, it's a little unclear who that person is. And if I understand it correctly, the person who is making a claim who would contact the superintendent's office and then they would assign at that point this title line coordinator, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't really quite read all that clearly to me. And I would like to say that ACA-A-R, it's a lot clearer than it is on ACAB-R, even though they're trying to say the same as that guy. So I'd like to adopt the ACA-A-R where the sentence says AAAO title line coordinator. And then underneath all the cross off, there's a line, the wording would seem a little cumbersome. So I'd like it to say something like the superintendent's office will assign inappropriate rather superintendent's office to be assigned to, and it does, just kind of really cumbersome. So could we make that change to superintendent's office will assign?
So also when I sent this out, I took out all the things that were crossed off. So the sentence is, any individual who's unsure about whether unlawful discrimination or harassment has occurred under which complaint procedure applies is encouraged to contact the superintendent's office to be assigned to an appropriate affirmative action coordinator.
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay.
That's, that's exactly what I saw.
Yeah, and so anyway, so it's the same wording, they have still the to be assigned. Because the sentence now makes sense because you drop, go directly from applies is encouraged to contact the superintendent's office to be assigned appropriate affirmative action coordinator. So all the cross off stuff is gone.
Well, you just need to take off that second to.
To contact the superintendent's office is.
An appropriate.
To be assigned. Okay, to be assigned to inappropriate affirmative, or you just want to be assigned inappropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then the wording on ACAB-R, I believe I made the same correction, because I did notice it didn't say to contact the superintendent's office. Yeah. So I'll make sure it has the same wording on ACAB-R as it has on ACA-A-R.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I feel like there, so that doesn't make you go back to committee, is it?
No.
Maybe just saying. That's good.
It could be approved for the second reading with those corrections, is what we're saying.
So you're going to get those corrections into Maria? So is everybody all set with that, as long as that happens?
Yep.
Just one more. Policy JKAA, on item three, there's a question at the end. How school packages do you handle two questions? And something similar, question four at the very end. It's like these are notes going to the policy.
It's yellow highlighted because they were notes to the committee. And when I sent it to the board, I forgot to take the yellow highlights out. And so now they are out. I, maybe I will forward it myself tonight, so everybody can see what it was done. Yeah. When I get home.
You're one step ahead of me. Thank you. I'm good, man.
So I make a motion that we approve all of the policies in I, all in one chunk. With corrections. Thank you.
Second. Any more discussion on those policies? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
It's so nice to see that folks do read these pages and pages, as we were told today, you know, policy reading is tedious.
Item four, what action will the board take to approve the second reading to Archives following recommended by the policy committee?
So moved.
Second. Discussion on that. We have policy ACB, ACB-R. Any discussion on those two policies? Seeing none, all those in favor of Archives and those policies? Unanimous, thank you. New business, what action will the school board take to approve an overnight trip to the wrestling team on the 7/29 in Carroll County, ahead of a wrestling tournament at Carroll High School on the 7/30? So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that.
I'll just clarify the reason for that is the beginning of the tournament is so early that for the kids to get there and have time to warm up properly, they have to leave at a ridiculously early, like three o'clock in the morning or something. So they're asking to go in ahead, get settled in, get some sleep. That's why, and we typically do this.
All those in favor? Unanimous. What action will the school board take to approve the first reading of policy DJ bidding slash purchasing requirements as recommended by the policy committee? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Can I have a discussion over this?
So this policy, you can see, was last amended in 2017. As we know, over the last eight, nine years, prices have gone up tremendously. And I think in A, it was actually a typo there, when the policy was approved before I was on board. And, and so what's in yellow is what's being taken out, and what's next to it is the new figures going into it. So in, yeah, on DJ. So on DJ, by law, and so this really can't be changed, it's a law that school building and structural alterations in pairs over $20,000 must be competitively bid on. And then in B, those are figures that was presented to us by BARB as a possible amount that if it's not required by law, that it will still be competitively bid on. And so the question is, does the board want to approve the $25,000 in, for purchase of equipment, supplies, and materials or services over $25,000? And then the next one is request or proposals for purchases over $10,000.
Going from $25,000 to $250,000, committee is quite a leap of faith. Because what that says to me is that anything under $250,000 does not have to necessarily be bid.
But that's made law. So we can't do anything about that.
So, so main law says that we have to allow our own school employees, our staff, to not bid projects that are under $250,000?
Yeah, that one was law. Again, I'm pretty sure it always was that.
That doesn't make any sense, Glenn.
Could we get some, so sorry, Ellen, I missed this meeting. Could we get some clarification? I think it's saying that we have to, by law, we have to, for any amount that's over. I don't think it's saying that we're not allowed to for things that are under. Glenn? So we could choose to go out to bid for projects of lesser amounts.
I understand that, but what, where do we say that we do go out to bid for projects under that amount?
Oh, you're, you're asking the policy committee to come up with a lower threshold as well?
Yes.
And that's what we talked about today, is we can't go against, we can't put in policies that go against main law.
Well, that wouldn't be if we had a policy that had a minimum of our bidding process.
The way I read it is, is that true? The way I read it is that the $250,000 is for school building and construction alterations and repairs only. The other ones, there's a lot of flexibility I see in B, where we could go out to bid if it's not required by law.
I personally would prefer to table this until I have more clarification about this. This, I don't like the way this reads. I think this could be word differently.
So Glenn, do you want to table this, or do you want to vote it down?
I just want, I just want to vote it down, because I know Pete knows a lot about this bidding process as far as school construction and bids. I'd like to hear something about that.
We could ask him to come to the budget, the next policy committee, and give us some, some advice on that.
That would be good.
I'd probably ask BARB as well.
So BARB, yes, I know BARB also.
She did put this one over, but we should ask, include her in that follow-up conversation.
I would just like to see this really clearly spelled out.
Okay.
Okay. What's not clearly spelled out?
I think the minimum amounts on what we, what we do bid out, you know, I'd like to see that. In other words, if we've got a project that we, that, let's say, we think it's going to cost $10,000, do, can we, BARB probably knows this, do we just allow that to be, to be bid up, to, for anyone to take that job, or do we bid it out?
I have a hard time hearing, but, okay, we, we have certain things, if we're required to do a bid, it's a specific process, and then it requires us to accept the low price regardless.
You said if we are required to send out a bid. That's, that's where my question comes, is when, where does the if come in, or the when? What's the threshold on this?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not, I have a hard time actually getting a little clearer of that.
I think we need to take.
Gives her time to process and get.
I just would like to see what our minimum bidding guidelines are, if we have something like that.
So would you like, we can guide more, we meet with the policy committee.
Yes, 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 that's what, that's what we're saying, yes.
Our process for request or proposal works in our better interest.
I believe that it does.
BARB will, will reach out to you. We thank you for the meeting.
Okay.
Anything else on, on this policy? All those in favor of this policy? All those opposed? I think it's eight. Are you opposed?
I guess I thought it was motion on table to table it.
We're just going to vote it down, so you were, you were opposed?
Well, I was a little confused because there was a thing said about table it, and so.
You didn't say to table it, you voted it down. I asked all those in favor of this policy, and there were no hands that went up. All those opposed, and the hands went up except yours.
I agree.
So are you with the voting down or?
Sure, yes.
Okay. So it's unanimous. Item two, well, we've done item two. Item three, what action will the school board take to approve the review of policy on DJH purchasing and contract due procurement, staff code of conduct, as recommended by the policy committee? So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that policy. Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Item four, what action will the school board take to authorize the school board communications committee in collaboration with the superintendent to create and manage a school board Facebook page? So moved. I'll second this. Discussion.
I think Facebook is a dangerous place to communicate, so that's just my personal opinion. Does the communications committee have a presentation about this?
We don't at the present time, but we have talked about it being only one-way communication. So it's just for giving out information about what the school board is doing, or what's happening in the district, but nothing coming back in from the community.
I already feel very overwhelmed by the number of Facebook pages that our district has, you know, Facebook page for each of the elementary schools, Facebook page for the middle school, Facebook page for the high school. And I'm totally uncomfortable with having another Facebook page for the school board. We have our, our website, we have the board place. We can certainly have a subfolder on, on our homepage for the school board, for any communications we want to go out. We have the newsletter that's sent out from the superintendent's office, and we have a corner on that for the school board. So this whole idea of another Facebook page just is extremely overwhelming to think about.
I can speak a little bit to this. The only way we can have a Facebook page legally is for it to be one-way. This would not be a page of controversy. This would be a page just to promote some of the things that the board is working on, different events that are happening at the school. We would like this group, our communications group, to collaborate with the administrators that already have a Facebook page, to take some of the things that they are posting, they could pick and choose, and include that on the school board page, to put that out. Basically, it's, it's a positive way to try to find a way, as we have been asked, to communicate with the community. The community does not use the webpage. Plain and simple, they don't use it. So if we are going to try to put information out to the community, like they've asked us to do, I feel that we need to find a way to do that. And that's what this would be.
I understand that it's not going to have comments on, but what people will do is take a screenshot of your post, repost it, and the comments will just flow underneath it. Facebook is such a divisive place right now. And, and it's, it's also just mostly, not a lot of younger people are on Facebook anymore. So it's not really a universal place to communicate. I just don't think it's a good idea. But that's why I said for a vote.
We ran a Facebook page here a while ago, that we, we ran it in the same manner, and it was not a school Facebook page, but it was, it was well-done, and it was one-way communication, and it was to post anything positive that we could, that we could think about within the school. So this would be similar in that it's just, it's just a tool for communication, that's all it is. You know, if, if we did this, and we felt that we were having problems with this page, or that it wasn't working, or that it was causing an issue, I think definitely we would need to address that. You know, we would need to take a look at that. Yes, this is, yes, correct, Carla?
What exactly would be, like, posted on the page? Would it include, like, dates for the board meetings? Like, I guess I'm confused if what exactly would be posted in this Facebook page?
That's, that's, that's a very good question. It could be just some of the things we've talked about here this evening. It could be things such as that. It could be talking about our meeting that we've got upcoming, you know, to try to get the message out to these residents of these four towns at our December meeting. You know, we have no way of getting that message out to these towns that anyone is going to receive. We have no method. So it would be things such as that. And I think it would be a work in progress. I think we'd have to see.
Test the waters.
Test the waters and see, see what it is. I think we have some skilled people here that, that can do that work. I think they're going to be very discreet about what they, what they put out there. And, you know, it's, it's time we start listening to some of what the people in our community are telling us that we need to do. We've heard that over and over and over, and yet we seem to avoid it. You know, it's time to, to bite a bone on something.
Can I just finish here?
So when, I don't do Facebook myself, so I'll have to excuse my ignorance, I don't know how Facebook works. But when I was approached with this, I did clarify that right now we have Facebook pages. All things that are posted on the Facebook pages are supposed to go through administration. So I don't just have random things being posted on there. They are to be one-way communication. So I did explain that, and that's why it does say in collaboration with me, I would have that same expectation, that before anything gets posted, showcasing the great things that we're doing in our school, because I do love that idea, that would all need to go through administration. We don't, we don't allow anybody to just post whatever they want. I do, I appreciate that. I also did just sort of clarify that I don't want this to be extra work for our administrators. They're already keeping up with their own Facebook pages, but my right hand here, Joey, explained that it might be easy enough to just have you repost with their posting. So it's just another, another place where the same information is getting out there. Glenn had suggested that maybe a different demographic might be reached with this Facebook page as opposed to the other. So it would have to be something that we have a. page as opposed to the other, so it would have to be something that we have a, we have to keep a close handle on. And I will just, for what it's worth, I will just say not to disagree with you completely, Glenn, but we do have our Thrill Share, which is one way that we will get it out there, that is how we get information out there. We will get out there that the meeting is going to be in Monroe and invite people, and that is something, obviously, we've spent a lot of time expanding so that we can reach even more people with messages like that. So just to clarify, basically, because one way we can do it about Thrill Share is one that we get out there and say, this is what meetings are.
I could say something about Thrill Share, but I'm not going to say it, so, because this, let's leave it at that. The, if we were going to have problems with a Facebook page, I would think, we have similar pages going out now, I would think we'd already be seeing those problems with pages that are being posted currently. We're not seeing that problem, so I don't see this as being any different. It's just a form of communication, that's all, it's very simple, that's all that it is, and that's all it's intended to be.
I have a question. I'm not familiar with Facebook at all, other than I know it exists, but you said, you know, if there were problems we could revisit it, can a person just take down a Facebook page and feel like it's gone, it's done, or is it always in the cloud?
I'm not a Facebook person either.
Anything that goes on the internet is always on the internet. So you can remove a page from Facebook, but you can always go back to see the history.
No, we'd want them to see that, so that's the whole idea of it. I look at this as just a one-stop shop for what we're doing here. Yes, we have the multiple Facebook presentations throughout the district of the school, and yet I look at this as just a way, if someone wants to log into Facebook and find out what is the board doing, they're not going to go to the website, RSU3 website, that still is a work in progress, in my opinion, it's very difficult to navigate that. I do think there are some efficiencies to be enhanced there, to be realized, but I look at the communication, the feedback that we've had from towns, not just one, throughout the district, they want to be kept apprised of what's going on more frequently. So I look at this as, and I know on Facebook either, you know, I beat it as a bet, but I look at this as just as a way to provide some direct information that's concise, that they can just, they don't have to dance around a lot of these other different Facebook offers. So I think that it's a, it may be throwing a dart at the dartboard, but at least we're throwing the dart. And we can navigate away from that, or massage it, or cancel it, there's all kinds of options that we can help this either succeed or not succeed. But I do want to continue to communicate to our towns. And for those that show up, that's wonderful, they get it firsthand, but there's an enormous amount of people in our district that do not show up. And so when it comes time for budgets, when it comes time for big decisions, they're left out in the cold, and we're backtracked trying to get them up to speed. And I'd like to keep communication on an ongoing basis. And we haven't communicated with people unless they can feed back to us what we just said. So that's my two cents. I guess I would ask another question also, in that if this is not a solution to communicating with the public, what do you suggest that we do to avoid the problem and just skip it completely?
I don't think I'm suggesting that, I'm just saying that Facebook, in my mind, Facebook is a very divisive place to post information, and it also is a place where pretty much one geographic person is going right now. And it is not a place where you're going to communicate with families who are, where parents are in their 30s who have kids in school, they're not on Facebook. So maybe it would be kind of for, as a platform, Facebook is, membership at Facebook goes down and down and down and down and down. We certainly can have it, it doesn't sound like we're really gelled on what information is going to go there, is it going to be budget information for towns, like what it's going to be? I'm just not a huge Facebook fan.
But you are a big communication fan.
Absolutely, but platform matters.
Me, we can look at another platform?
Yeah, platform matters a lot, but I mean, let's vote on it.
Well, the intent is communication, if it's not Facebook data, it's something else. You know, I don't know if we're married to that, just a thought. Any more discussion?
So at this point, I'd like to have more information from the communications committee on what exactly they see would be there that's not going out on Thrill Share or already posted on our page, on our website before, I mean, it's the same idea about, you know, I just want to table this and have more information about it, so that's where I am, on another Facebook page. If you're equating this to what happened back in May and June for the Facebook page that was created in Liberty, that had some pretty ugly stuff that went around, although I was blocked from it, people did still send me material that was happening on that page, it was not pleasant.
I didn't see any of that at all. But anyway, as I said, I don't really want to table this, I'm going to take a vote on it, and as far as, you know, as I said, we are going to use our heads in doing this. If it doesn't work, we'll bring it back to the table. We certainly don't have any intent to put something out there that is going to be divisive or cause problems. We are trying to address, and that's all we're trying to do, is address what the public has asked for. I feel that that's part of my job, is to look at that. If, I have no interest in going to a select board meeting, which I do go to, and them asking me for, you know, what are you doing now about communication? Sorry, can't do anything, you gotta go to the webpage, go to the school webpage.
Can I ask one question? Or maybe it's a favor, I guess I'm asking of everyone here. Maybe in your towns, your town meetings, or wherever, could you start soliciting from people some specifics on what communication they would like to have? I guess I'm asking because between the webpage and Thrill Share and the newsletters that go out from the central office, the newsletters that go out from every one of the schools, the Facebook pages that they all have, I feel like I'm running out of ways to communicate. If there are a lot more ways out there, I'm open to them, but I just, I feel like we get a lot of feedback that we're not communicating. So if you could ask for more specifics, like what is it that you are not getting, or how are you not getting it that you'd like to get it? I think that would be really helpful for all of us, because we're maybe throwing a dart here at a dartboard or whatever, but again, we're communicating in so many ways right now, and I'm literally running out of ways to communicate if that makes any sense, so.
The ways that we are communicating are not the ways that other people are, it is another tool-
Can I please turn off my phone?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you for that. You're right, Lisa, we do, we have many means of communication, we do. We have the school webpage that no one uses. No one that I talk to uses the school webpage. There's nothing really wrong with it, it does have some things that need to be cleaned up, and we do have Thrill Share, when we get that cleaned up, that's still a little bit of work in progress. But this is nothing, this is not that big a deal, truly, this isn't that big a deal. It's just a tool to put information out there. And if you choose not to do it, then don't do it, but you know, I think it could be helpful to us. Yes?
So I'm not necessarily the demographic that you're looking for, but I do use Facebook, and I use it to keep track of what's going on in the camp, what's going on in the school. And I come here to the school board meetings because I don't have the income to the town select board meetings to tell us what's going on for. I don't have-
I was just there a couple months ago, we decided it was going to be quarterly.
That's right, I don't miss it. I've lived in the United States for five years now. Seriously.
Let's not get into that.
People do use it, I use it, our town office has a Facebook page. People use it to keep track of the school. Okay, let's go.
I just, I have a couple of things, I'm sorry. I agree with Glenn wholeheartedly that communication needs to be as good as possible. You've got to try to use effective ways of communicating, not being a Facebook person at all, not even know what it's like. And I heard that there's an opportunity for maybe other platforms that could be used. I'd like to defeat this and get some more information before putting it through, or maybe there's something better out there. But I also want to say that there's an onus on the community to access the communication that we're putting out there. You know, I know that Lisa's spending a lot of time sending out these weekly newsletters, and when I ask people in my community about reading them, they haven't read them. And I ask them, you know, they ask me questions about what's happening in school, and I ask them, have they gone through the website? Some of them have, but most of them haven't. I think, this is a two-way street, I think it was Glenn that said, you know, just put it out there and they'll read that, that's not communication. So I'm, I'd like to see hand in hand with more communicating from us, sort of a movement from us to get the community to say, okay, this is where the stuff is, go find, yeah, not being very articulate, but I don't feel like this is the right answer right now tonight.
Okay, let's look at this for a second. I don't agree really with some of this, because I think it could be a very effective tool, and I think it's a tool that even though some of you may not use it, and you need to do it, a lot of people do. It is just a tool that is, and that's all it would be for us, is a tool. But I'll tell you what, I don't particularly like jamming something down somebody's throat just because we may have the votes to do that. I don't particularly like that approach. So what I would suggest, what would you say if we then took the communications committee and Lisa, and we figured out the types of things that we were actually going to put on the site, so that you then could see what type of information and what we might be putting out there, and look at this again? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, speaking for myself, yes, and also could we look at other platforms, because I heard that that's a possibility. I don't want to put a lot of work on it.
Well, see, we have the horses to do the work, and that's what this is about. You know, we've got some work to do, the community is telling us we've got some work to do, and it starts on, and saying, we better get at it. Yes?
So Lisa, how are you thinking that we could survey the community in terms of what they're looking for?
If I may interject, may I?
Please.
I'd kind of like to put this to bed as best as possible. I'm going to repeat myself, well, oftentimes, in education, repetition is a good learning tool, provided that the information that's being repeated is beneficial, and people learn from it. This, to me, I'm thinking of another tool to communicate what we're doing. We're not necessarily soliciting outside feedback input, this is going to be a one-way communication, but I hear oftentimes, people do not know what the board is doing. And so I would like to have something that whatever we're doing here, we get minutes, it gets posted to the website, and a month later, people behind the egg ball, and a lot of people do not go looking for it on our website. They are, even though we're in the 21st century, we want to be satisfied here and now, right now. And Facebook, the new digital age is upon us, and you gotta just use it, Facebook. This is a way that people, we had an experience where we opened up Facebook some months ago, and within no time, there were 450 participants. And so that communicated that people want this information, they weren't feeding back, but they wanted what we were sending to them. So I know it can happen, I know it can be successful, and it's just a way to communicate what the board is doing, not what's happening in the elementary school, not what Lisa has sent out of her newsletter, this is specific to what we're doing here.
So I would like to get just a little bit more detail, like the reason that the minutes don't get posted till a month later is because we have to vote on them. So we couldn't, but we wouldn't be able to put board minutes onto Facebook ahead of that, because we'd still have to do the voting process. So it would be great if we could just get a little bit more information from the communications committee about what we want to put out here, kind of what the process is, it's good to know that Lisa, you know, would be approving it, just let us know a little bit more information.
I guess another thing that, you know, I would like an answer to is that, what would we be saying to our select boards, to our communities, and to those people that don't use this platform, if we vote this down and we say, you know, this was something we could have done, but we just couldn't pull it off, couldn't pull the trigger on it, it's too hard?
Exactly, so let's just get some more information so that everyone on the board feels comfortable with it, so we can move on then.
Is everybody okay with that? We'll get some more information, we'll be more specific on what we're going to do, or if we do this, and how we go. And I believe we can do that between now and our next meeting. That way, we're not putting something on some of you that really would like to have.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yes?
I'm talking that bit over here.
Can you use the mic, please?
Oh, definitely.
And we've got to wrap this up this evening.
Yeah, my move is to perfect, but it just leads to precisely what you had said, Mr. Works, in that you guys have created a Facebook community, and you all got voted in, and then it's been cricket since. And so my comment is, if you're going to create a Facebook page, and you're going to make comments to the community, you can't just drop us like a ton of bricks. It has to be, you can't just be like, this is too hard, I'm not doing it anymore. That's my comment, that's kind of just, you can't just be like, hey, let's do it, too hard.
Yeah, good point, thank you very much. And that wasn't the reason that it was dropped, because it was too hard, we felt we needed to regroup and look at something differently, that that was done, we needed to proceed in a different manner, that's why it was like that. People did really use that, they really used it. So we've got a motion on the floor, I think we have a second, so if we want to, we're going to wrap that right now. We need to vote this down and come back again. So all those in favor of this motion?
Actually, for it, it seems like it's strong, if I know where we're at, it's from the board members.
I think we kind of know where we're at.
I'm for it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah. Okay, so we have one in favor.
Yes, please.
All those opposed?
One's a lone voter, it's okay.
That's defeated. Okay, so we've got two in favor, okay, thank you. So it's 72. All right. I think we're done.
Yeah, I'd like to see what happens with this proposal, the alumni speaker program, how that's going to go, so I think that's another outreach that's on top of everything else.
Can you say that again, please? Can you say that again, please?
As part of communications, we have this proposal from our student alumni speaker series, and there's no starting date for it, but.
No, can I just comment? So basically, this is just kind of a heads-up for the board of a brainchild that the communications committee has had. We would like to showcase our graduates that, you know, from Mountview High School, and to ask alumni to come in, come back to the school. But it's just, we're really in the very early stages. It's something that's been thought of, that would be a good thing. Renee and I just did mention it to Lisa, she supported the idea, but it hasn't gotten off the ground yet, because we wanna be able to meet with administration, we'd like to meet with the guidance counselors to get a feel for, you know, juniors, particularly and seniors. I'm dating myself, when my daughters were juniors, they were looking ahead to what they wanted to, you know, where did they wanna go to college? What career fields were they?
Yeah, we gotta wrap this up.
Okay, no.
We'll have to go, we'll have to ask for time.
All right, so bottom line, we're just, it's an idea, we'd like to proceed, you know, pursue, and then we would come back and circle back.
So target date is next fall, then?
Pardon me?
Target date, dates next fall.
We don't have a target date, because we haven't talked to the people we need to talk to.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed you on the reports, we can try to catch you again unless you want to be really brief on your conference.
I don't wanna hold people up in a bad time. I'll be only adjourned next month.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? All right.